And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly. And whereas the family violence results from the use of force or threat to achieve and maintain control over others in intimate relationships and abuse of power in society, fosters battering by perpetuating conditions which condone violence and only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation's billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police, court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas the Raton Alternatives to Violence and shelters throughout the state of New Mexico are working together to provide effective intervention, prevention, community education, and support to build a non-violent family environment in our city, now therefore do I, James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Here in Raton, New Mexico, and urge all citizens to participate in the planned activities such as the Alternatives to Violence Candlelight Vigil at the Schuler on Saturday, October 27th at 6:00 PM, and to encourage those in need of services to request assistance. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and seal and cause the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this ninth day of October 2018. I present that at this time. Come on. Thank you. Can I just take a second? It's, uh, in many years we've been doing these proclamations and we appreciate the City Commission for doing it for us every year. And we've got a lot of activities planned for October. We had a great walk this past Saturday, thanks to the PBW and the Quanis Club. We've got another walk coming up this coming Saturday in Simroon. We hope everybody comes out for that. And the Candlelight Vigil is going to be special this year. We have a nationally known speaker coming in, and she's on Oprah and that connection that we've had in the past, so we're real excited about it. So I want to encourage everybody to come out to the Candlelight Vigil again. Thank you all.
Thank you for what you do. Okay, next we have a proclamation for the National Business Women's Week, October 14th through 20th. Commissioner Chatterley, I believe, has that on.
Raton Professional Business Women's Week. Whereas the Business and Professional Women's Foundation has continued proclaiming National Business Women's Week that was started by the National Federation of Businesses and Professional Women in 1928 to dramatize women's contributions in their communities, states, and the nation. And whereas Raton Professional Business Women, PBW, is affiliated with New Mexico Professional Business Women, the oldest organization for working women today. And whereas Raton PBW members have adopted a mission to advocate for all women's issues at a local, state, and national level. And whereas Raton PBW members have adopted a progressive legislative platform that supports women in all ages and all stages of their lives, and equality under the law regardless of gender, age, ethnicity, physical abilities, class, or sexual identity. And whereas women constitute over 52% of the New Mexico workforce, New Mexico's workforce. And whereas Raton PBW improves the lives of women throughout the community by sponsoring programs such as Marketing Yourself for Success Personally, Politically, and Professionally, and programs promoting leadership, communication, negotiation, and progressive skills to help women succeed. Now therefore does James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of Raton, hereby proclaim the week of October 14th through 20th, 2018, as Raton Professional Business Women's Week, and urge all citizens to join in this salute to working women by encouraging and promoting the celebration of the achievements of all businesses and professional women for their daily contributions to our economic, civic, and cultural well-being. In witness thereof, he has set his hand and seal and caused the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this ninth day of October 2018.
Okay, next up we have Mayor Pro Tim Schuster with the U-Rock Awards.
Mayor, we have just one to give away today because we just have one recipient present. And this is going to the Mayor and the City Commission of Raton proudly present certificate of recognition, recognition to Lisa Camp, in acknowledgement of her being an outstanding citizen with unwavering efforts to be a true ambassador of Raton. And we appreciate the work you did all summer taking care of...
At this time we will take any comments from the general public. Anyone wishing to address the commission may do so at this time. Mr. Berry?
Yeah. Mayor, Commissioners, it's Scott and Michael Ann. You guys always give us some ways, I'm gonna give you some.
All right.
And if you want to hang it here in the chambers, wherever you want it, but I hope it kind of resembles what's behind us up here on the hill, so.
Cool. That's great.
You guys do what you want with it.
Thank you Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Anyone else wish to address the commission? Okay, moving on to item six, the business portion of our program. Item A, Approval of the September 25th, 2018 Regular Commission Meeting Minutes. You've all had a chance to look at these, I hope, in your packets. I've read them, I didn't really see anything out of place.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item B, Deliberate an Act on the Event Forms, one for the Calvary Baptist Hay Ride, October 24th, and the next one would be the Raton Main Street Safe Trick or Treat on October 31st. Is there anyone here wishing to address commission on those? Seems like everything was in order.
Nothing wrong with them.
I move to approve.
One second, a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the events of the Calvary Baptist Hay Ride and Raton Main Street Safe Trick or Treat. Is there any further discussion or questions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Berry, you looked at me like you wanted to say something there.
No, Mayor, both events that we've had for several years, very familiar with, staff has reviewed that, or recommendations for approval.
Great. Deliberate an Act on Appointments to the Labor Management Relations Board. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commission, you'll remember back some time, I believe about 18 months ago, the commission had adopted a revision to the Personnel Ordinance, and it included the formation of the Labor Management Relations Board. And we said at the time that that was the result of a settlement agreement between the City of Raton and the firefighters' organization, IAFF. So those appointments previously were made. The three individuals that you have in your packet were appointed to the Labor Management Relations Board. I can tell you that there has not been a lot of business since that time for this board. They did meet recently, but all three existing board members are up for reappointment. One provision of that ordinance is the term is for one year. So we would recommend a reappointment of all three individuals. You have their information in the packet, and these are the three that currently serve on that, on that board.
All righty. Are there any questions for Mr. Berry?
I'll make a motion to approve appointments of the Labor Management Relations Board.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommended candidates for the Labor Management Relations Board.
And Mayor, I can just elaborate for the benefit of people out there who don't have this, the three candidates are William Daley, Eric Honeyfield, and Sarah Kowalski. And the one thing I reported, Sarah Kowalski was appointed the chairperson of that board.
Any other questions or anything for Mr. Berry? We have a motion and a second, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Sorry, who made the second?
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item D, Deliberate an Act on Bid Award for Sport Utility Vehicles. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commission, this is for a vehicle that's generally used for city hall use. It will, it's proposed to replace the 2004 Chevy Trailblazer that currently is used. Typically that will be used for out-of-town events, going to legislature or anywhere in the state of New Mexico generally. The Trailblazer has 140,000 miles on it, is 14 years old, and I can tell you it's getting a little tired. So we had talked about this for some time. We have received sealed bids for the vehicle. You see the results, the bid opening, the tabulation. Two bids were received. The low bid was submitted by Phil Long Ford of Raton, and the amount 28,795. And that's for the base Ford Explorer vehicle. So we think that's a good price. That's lower than the state contract price, and I would recommend award of that to Phil Long Ford of Raton, to the commission. I guess I would add that the Trailblazer will probably stay around as a local vehicle, but I think it's really not probably suitable to go over the highway with the age and the mileage.
I wouldn't concur with that.
Does this new Ford Explorer have a heater in the back?
It's the base model, Commissioner. I would dress warmly.
There any further questions for Mr. Berry?
What color is it?
I'll make a motion. Oxford white.
We have a motion to accept the bid for sport utility vehicle. Have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion.
Even without the heater, huh?
And a second, without the heater. For the, to accept the bid on the award for the sport utility vehicle. Any further questions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign? Motion carries, thank you. Item E, Deliberate an Act on Bid Award for Mobile Asphalt Recycler. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commission, I would yield to our Public Works Director, Jason Phillips, and he's got some information for you on this piece of equipment, as well as the piece of equipment that you see displayed on the screen.
Um, Commissioner, I've got a short video clip that I think we'll kind of preface with before I ask for a vote. This piece of equipment that we have before you tonight has been procured through a sealed bid process. It is a mobile asphalt recycler. And if you remember, our intention moving forward, in a world that we no longer have a local hot mix plant that's producing generally coal mix, we would generally buy somewhere in the neighborhood of $30,000 worth of coal mix every year, store it in a stockpile and use it to patch potholes with. Our solution to that was we acquired tens of thousands of yards of millings off Interstate 25 and stockpiled on Herford. And the intention of this unit is to be used to turn those millings into hot mix asphalt that we will then use for patching of potholes. So we've got a video, it's kind of a sales video, but it's tough to describe exactly how this machine functions without kind of showing you. So I will show you a little bit of the video, and then we'll discuss it a little more.
Mobile asphalt at user, not producer quantities. Up to 2,600 pounds of recycled asphalt product can be loaded into the heavy gauge bucket wide steel hopper. After loading, the drum begins to turn using diesel-powered hydraulics, and the KM International T2 Asphalt Recycler begins the process of transforming a previously discarded load of rap in a hot usable asphalt. All this in as little as 20 minutes. After loading, the hopper is then hydraulically raised to allow the 700,000 BTU Beckett burner to be placed just inside the reinforced steel hopper. The process of transforming the recycled asphalt product into hot, under-the-new asphalt is now underway. At Michigan prevailing union wages, the Michigan Department of Transportation is producing asphalt at $20 to $25 per ton instead of $80 to $120 for new. By using reclaimed asphalt and used asphalt shingles, the process is not just green, but smart. The savings to your budget is immediate. Through the use of specially-designed steel flights inside the 450 Bernal hardened steel heating drum, the asphalt is folded over to provide maximum heat and mixing while preventing the product from burning or scorching. With costs over $75 per ton for new, or $25 per ton for recycled better-than-new asphalt, the benefits to the environment are only an additional incentive to adopt the process. The addition of asphalt shingles or other source of asphalt cement brings the AC content back to a premium grade, meeting or exceeding Department of Transportation specifications. The design and engineering of the T2 Asphalt Recycler is similar to our entire line of asphalt maintenance equipment. It has been manufactured for quality, long life, and easy maintenance. The large outer doors on either side of the T2 make the heating, will cause expensive... The T2 recycler allows the user to change the recipe to fit the application and then current weather conditions. A hydraulic lift raises the entire load for easy unloading into a waiting hot box reclamer or directly to a waiting asphalt application. The KM International T2 Asphalt Recycler takes otherwise discarded waste and turns it into highly usable working material. The T2 recycles costs effectively all year long, in good and bad weather, long after the asphalt plants are closed for the season. Even in cold or wet weather conditions, the T2 Asphalt Recycler is able to heat a load of recycled asphalt product every 20 minutes to the desired usable temperature. During the deepest, coldest part of the Midwest winter, the T2 Asphalt Recycler will take asphalt product and produce load after load of hot mixed asphalt produced on potholes and water main breaks that would otherwise be left until spring.
So minus the heavy metal music, that is, in essence, what this T2 recycler does. You know, the video mentions cold mix and hot mix costs in the $80 to $100 a ton range. We were paying about $93 a ton last year. The water department generously has paid for half of this piece of equipment, and that's a result, in prior years, we would split the 300 tons of cold mix at a cost of about $15,000 each to each of our departments. So it's anticipated this machine pays for itself by year three. And on the bright side, you know, you saw its ability to use asphalt shingles. In addition, we'll be adding an asphalt additive, but it truly is 100% recycled product at that point. We're taking millions that we've received for free that are kind of a hindrance to other people, and asphalt shingles, making hot mix year-round. Really cool process. It's small batches, so it's not like we're going to be able to pave roads with this by any means, but it is going to be effective for the site crew that we have and what we need. We did take sealed bids, and prior to doing so, you know, we've, it's not the first time I've seen this video. I've watched videos on about 100 different sites. And also spoke to the Public Works Director for the City of Hobbs. And as most of you know, Hobbs is a pretty well-funded department. And that gentleman had told us that he actually traveled all the way to Massachusetts to see a Begala unit similar to this that costs about twice as much. He had clearance to buy any unit he wanted to, up to $180,000. He purchased this unit for $80,000. We've got a sealed bid price for it for $78,559.50, and I would recommend award of a contract to KM International to purchase this piece of equipment. And I stand for any questions again. Or I can rewind the video.
This is the fuel for this.
This is exclusively diesel, which is one of the highest-selling points of it.
The diesel, the machine runs on diesel, and the Beckett burner creates a diesel mist
that's fired at, what, 75,000 BTUs that it produces. No propane, and uses somewhere in the neighborhood of three gallons of diesel per hour, so its operating cost are a fraction of what most propane asphalt recyclers would be.
Has Hobbs had a good track record with it? It's functioning well? Everybody's pleased with it?
They love their machine. They point out that in their neck of the woods, they have hot mix plants that they just usually go to the plant every morning and patch potholes. This is designed for their winter application, but this guy said if he had to do it all over again, he'd buy it every time.
That's great.
We actually were able to demo this unit. The sales rep, we expressed interest, shipped a unit here from, they're based out of Michigan, I believe this unit came out of Texas. It had been at a trade show, free of charge demonstration. It was impressive. It, there's a little, it's kind of like baking. If the millings have some dirt in them, it doesn't produce as good a mix. Fortunately, most of our millings came off of an interstate, so they're pretty clean, and the product was as effective as hot mix that I'd ever seen.
Cool. And I would think we're going to do a little more camping than just with the shovel.
Yes. And maybe even buy a new roller in the future.
Hey, right on.
And then I also have something to share with you as well before I kind of wrap it up.
Proud to be merry he didn't bring up the hot box thing.
Well, that's gonna, we'll talk about the hot box in some way.
All right.
As of 5/15 this afternoon, our brand-new CAT 926M loader arrived at the Public Workshop. This was purchased with the capital outlay funds, the same that will be purchasing this asphalt recycler. It is an awesome machine. It is going into service 18 years after our most recent loader purchase, which is also a CAT, and we're optimistic that it would last our department for a couple decades as well. My staff and I would like to thank the commission and the city manager for allowing us to get some equipment purchased. The capital outlay funds are fought hard for by every department head, and you know, everybody kind of gets their turn, but it's been a long time since the City of Raton made an investment in the street department of this size, and we sure appreciate it. So thank you for that as well. With this, if, with the successful award of this asphalt recycling and its purchase, we will expend 100% of our capital outlay funds. We've had our ground agreement for less than 45 days. We'll be closed out within 60 days and ready for a legislative cycle. And that's truly what our representatives and the governor are looking to see. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job on that, and that opens the door for the next legislature that we can go after some more capital outlay funds.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions for either Mr. Berry or Mr. Phillips? Would entertain a motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve bid award for the mobile asphalt recycler.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the bid award for the mobile asphalt recycler. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, Public Hearing, Deliberate an Act on Ordinance Number 1000, An Ordinance Enacting and Adopting a Supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Raton and Declaring an Emergency. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, this is an action that we take periodically to codify the code of ordinances to reflect changes that have happened throughout time. So it's been a little while since we've codified the code of ordinances, and we are accomplishing that now. And so this will, as far as our printed editions, we will bring those up to date, and as well as the code that's shown online, that will be up to date and accurate for the public that wants to look at those code of ordinances. And I know I use the online version a lot all the time, so you definitely want to be current on that. And you know, we're, we will start planning some additional revisions to the code as we go along, but periodically we will perform this codification. Michael Ann has really put in a lot of effort into this codification, and I don't know if, Michael Ann, you have some comments for the commission on this?
Mayor and Commission, this codification does include ordinances 993 through 996. I believe that was the changes to the Personnel Ordinance with regards to the Labor Management Board. We had the Animal Ordinance, and then also some substantive changes to the Solid Waste Ordinance. So those will be reflected in the codification, as the city manager said, in the printed version and the online. So we're already working on Supplement Number 10 that will include the two ordinances passed with respect to the repeal of the one cent tax, supplemental grocery receipts tax, and then also the tax that was enacted during the March election, and that's the three-quarters in supplemental grocery receipts. So our next supplement will be done before January 1st, before those go into effect.
Cool. Any questions for Michael Ann or Mr. Berry?
I will move to approve Ordinance Number 1000, Enacting and Adopting a Supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Raton and Declaring an Emergency.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance Number 1000. Any further discussion? Michael Ann, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Item G, Deliberate an Act on Resolution 2018-59, Authorizing the Certification of the City of Raton's 2018 Capital Asset Inventory. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commission, a capital asset inventory has become an important component of our independent audit and our report to the state auditor. And as we've said before, it's, there's a lot of work that goes into this inventory annually. So we do have a consultant that's shown here, RCI, that performs field work as far as verifying inventory. It's a lot of work, again, with our clerk treasurer. As a matter of fact, she was working on that right up till the meeting time here, and I think we'll continue with some work. But it's something that became important maybe 10 or 12 years ago, changes adopted by state auditor in the state. And you know, it's one thing to keep an inventory of equipment like the loader that you see here, but when you start looking at miles of roads, alleys, pipelines, dams, and those kind of things, it greatly does complicate that. And then, of course, we're always upgrading and working on those, doing a lot of road construction through the years, so those are things that need to be reflected. Again, Michael Ann has put a lot of work into this, and it's... Again, Michael Ann has put a lot of work into this, and it's a lot of work on an ongoing basis. And, Michael Ann, if you have some comments or something to add to the Commission as far as that goes?
I would just request that we postpone till the August, October 23rd meeting. I'm just finalizing, as city manager Berry stated, some of the infrastructure improvements. I was trying to finalize some numbers on quantities in order to finish up that report. So as soon as I can finish some of that verification, I'm actually really, really close to getting it done. So I apologize for not having you for this meeting.
So we have a request from Ms. Ntunuchi to postpone October 23rd. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to postpone Resolution 2018-59, authorizing certification of the City of Raton's 2018 capital asset inventory to October 23rd.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone Resolution 2018-59. Any other discussion, question? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item H. Deliberate an act on Resolution 2018-60, fiscal year 19, budget adjustment number two. Michael Ann, Mr. Berry?
Uh, city manager and commission, in your packet this evening, we do have budget adjustment number two, which does reflect the action that you just took on the new asphalt recycler. So we'd like to incorporate that into the budget. We do have some leftover legislative capital outlay funds that we will use towards the purchase of this new unit. And then we'll also split, the Raton Water Works will pay 50%. So we've budgeted $40,000, so their 50% will come out to just slightly less than $40,000. And then the city, we will do a reclassification out of our street maintenance line item into a capital outlay equipment line item to cover our portion as well. Other than that, just a few line item adjustments within the Recreation Center Fund for some HVAC and vehicle repairs that were unbudgeted.
Any questions for Michael Ann?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-60, FY 19, budget adjustment two.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution number 2018-60, budget adjustment number two for fiscal year 19. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I. Deliberate an act on partnership agreement between the City of Raton and the New Mexico State Fire Marshal. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, this is an agreement that we have operated on for some time, and it creates an agreement between the City of Raton, in this case, and the State Fire Marshal, and essentially accomplishes two things. It makes an arrangement as far as fire code inspections. Here in Raton, primarily fire code inspections are performed by the Raton Fire Department. However, through this partnership, we'll work with the State Fire Marshal Division for those. In addition, we have a partnership as far as investigations. And we have had a couple of fires in town very recently where we did ask the State Fire Marshal to assist with an investigation, and they responded immediately and performed that investigation. And in both cases, there was a finding of arson, and so we'll be going forward with that. But that's primarily the two things that the agreement will provide as far as our partnership. And I would recommend for approval of the agreement as submitted to you.
I'll move to approve partnership agreement between City of Raton and New Mexico Fire Marshal.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement between City of Raton and the New Mexico State Fire Marshal. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J. City managers' report. Mr. Berry?
Uh, Mayor and Commission, I'll just give you an update on construction projects we've talked about previously. We have three that are in progress. Hospital Drive, that's a reconstruction project that is well underway. Great Blocks Project on First Street, we've made good progress on that. And then the Hart Avenue Brilliant Street Waterline Replacement Project, again, there's good progress on that one as well. There are a couple of weather days here this week, so not a lot of progress to talk about this week. But in the case of all three, they're moving along. I think the other infrastructure project we talked about was at Raton Municipal Airport. We've talked about the reconstruction of the remaining portion of Taxi Way Alpha. The contractor had requested that we delay the start of construction until spring or early summer in 2019. All the parties agreed to that. As far as the City of Raton, that would defer our cost share until that time. And we had expressed some concern about our general fund budget during the winter months, so we should see that probably in better shape when that project does hit. And it's possible that our cost share could even occur in the next fiscal year, but we did agree to that. So that project will be on hold during the winter. I had provided some information regarding the airport, and I had submitted a request for supplemental AIP appropriation. That was submitted to the Federal Aviation Administration for reconstruction of the asphalt apron that's located in the area of the terminal and the hangar row. That's asphalt that has raveled and deteriorated, and we would like to rehabilitate that. We asked for a million dollars under the supplemental appropriation. FAA was granted an additional $1 billion during the term of 2018 to 2020 for the supplemental appropriation. You see the letter attached that in the fiscal year 2018, our project was not funded. However, we will be in the running for fiscal year 2019, and the deadline on that is right now, it's the end of October. So we'll find out about that. Of the $1 billion, I think a little over $200 million was awarded in the fiscal year 2018. So there's still a lot of funding to be determined in fiscal year 2019 and 2020. So we have a pretty good hope that this project will be funded, and we'll keep after it until we hopefully get that money. And the good thing about this fund is it is 100% grant money. There's not a local match to that. So I'll keep you updated on that as we work with FAA on that. I have been working with the City of Raton Utilities in a project to look at an advanced metering infrastructure application for Raton. The primary benefits of that would be, we would see an energy savings, a more efficient type of system. Under that smart metering system, there's a two-way communication between the utilities and consumers. So there is real-time data that's available to customers and to the utilities. So we will spend some time looking at that, and then I think we'll talk about that at Raton Public Service Company down the road a little bit. There, also on your table, there's some news regarding Amtrak. Marty had scooped us on this a while back. I think this is also on KRTN site, but the, this article's from the Santa Fe New Mexican, and it reports that Amtrak will drop its plan to convert a segment of the Southwest Chief Rail Line to bus service, and that would have included Raton. So that's apparently not taking place currently, and I understand that that agreement is due to fiscal year 2019, that the Southwest Chief will continue to run, and we believe that's very good news. So the last thing I would leave you with is I had a conversation with Amtrak in regard to the proposed Raton Train Station Exchange. We had a very productive phone call, actually several of those. Amtrak did make revisions to the agreement. They sent that to me yesterday. We're in the process of reviewing that, so hopefully we can bring that back to the Commission for your consideration soon. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Is there any other business to come? Commissioner Chavez, anything to state? Commissioner Jacomo?
No.
Commissioner Chavez?
Mr. Campbell, can I ask you a question? How much water have we, how many days have we been able to pump out of Cimero before it got...
Pump partially out of Cimero, but on, we've been battling the river and sand. I will be back down there trying to clear a pipeline at 7:30 in the morning. Close fire, it's an ongoing battle. Lot of sand moving downriver. At this point, we actually have a pipeline between the river and pretreatment.
Wow. Thank you.
That's all I have. Mayor Quotim?
Good. Thank you.
Couple of things I'd just like to point out. Was with the New Mexico Municipal League this weekend, we were going over resolutions that we're going to propose that the league will highly recommend or support. Among them, tax revisions are several resolutions. They want to focus on the internet tax that all of the locals can share in it. It's important that we get legislation passed that is a tax on the destination, not the origin of the purchase. If you go to Amazon and buy something and you, the legislation is for the origin, we only get the local level, a half of a half percent of that. If we get the destination part of it passed, we get to apply our tax to it. So that would benefit us greater. Of course, we heard the state was kind of pushing, they don't care, they just want the origin, they just want the tax. It benefits them more than it benefits us because they get a bigger chunk of that. So we want the destination part of that. The other thing that was really stressed, it looks like there's going to be a surplus. You know, we heard $1 billion. It's actually probably going to be closer to $2 billion, and it's because of the oil and gas boom this last year. So it was said down there, if you've got capital outlay, this is the year to go get it, because there should be plenty of money available. So whatever is on your wish list, this would be the time to go for it.
And Mayor and Commission, I think we start to talk about that maybe as soon as the next Commission meeting. And, you know, with that news, we probably have a longer conversation than we normally would, so I think we start to talk about it.
They recommended that we start contacting our representatives and senators now with our requests, getting them in now. So, that's all I have. Okay, so no other business. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.